Council meeting to order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first presentation this morning is the 2025 community survey results from Zen City.
Madam Mayor, we're going to have a presentation by Zen City and they will be calling in via WebEx.
I can't hear you.
Thanks for saying.
I got it. Okay, is this better?
Yes, speak right up.
Okay, Zen City is going to be presenting their study, their survey results that's been done from between May and July of 2025.
Good morning and welcome. I don't hear audio. Let's give it a try. If we can't get audio, we'll call Stacy's cellphone and put it on the microphone. Check, check, keep checking. Can we go ahead with the next presentation? Anybody object? We'll go ahead and presentation B is micro mobility ordinance. We welcome Paul Schultz and Keith Larson, Transportation Advisory Group. And yes, this is now impromptu for them. Are you guys ready? Why not? Good morning, welcome. Thanks for doing this.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
Yep, sorry. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council, staff. So, the Transportation Advisory Group for the past few weeks has been meeting about a proposed ordinance update. Let's get the material. And so, after some discovery for several weeks, we're now ready to come to council and get an idea on if what we have been doing is going in the direction that Mayor and Council would like us to go in. Okay, so what we've been taking a look at in the ordinance specifically is Chapter 70, street sidewalks and other public ways, and Chapter 78, traffic. We're taking a look at those to see where there are gaps, where we can enhance safety, and given the plethora of new micro mobility devices, what we should do or what we could do about some of them. So, again, from our, the ordinance that created the Transportation Advisory Group, we're taking a look at measures to improve safety throughout the path system. Okay, so where we have some ordinance gaps and some opportunities are some of the rules that we have on the paths, and we'll get into these in a little bit. I'll hand the presentation to Keith. Some definition, definition of the path system itself, definition of some of the micro mobility vehicles that are allowed on the system, with the micro mobility vehicles when they have intersections in the city between regular roads and paths and sidewalks, undefined electrical devices, e-devices that have certain public risk. I think anyone who's used the path system in the past, you know, several months, even maybe years now, we're seeing lots of, everything now is electrified. So, and because of that, speed, risk of interfering, what I should say, potential conflicts exist on the path system. So, we need to define the e-devices that are appearing on the path system and figure out how to mitigate risk to the public. Taking a look at how we define a golf cart versus a motorized cart, and then also taking a look at low-speed vehicles and some recommendations on an implementation strategy.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Keith Larson. I'm the Vice Chair, supporting Paul and the group. You know, the reality is, is we've been talking the last six months, twice a month, with public comment that we received by email as well as residents coming in our meetings addressing their concerns, especially about path rules. What are the rights of pedestrians? How can I safely navigate the path system? What about all the other users? So, our challenge and opportunity is about the path rules themselves. And what's interesting is the origin of the path rules. They were not a genius of the city at the start of the introduction of carts onto bicycle trails. It was actually a development developer who proposed it to the city, because the city was leaning on them to add paths, and they were looking at it from a civil liability perspective. And they said, "We need to have some rules to govern how carts interact with all the other users of the path system." And that was 1974. So, you know, way ahead of the curve of everybody else in the nation, pretty much, by everything we've been able to find. But that one happened over time is in both Chapter 70 and 78, rules of behavior, etiquette, and look at the list, special rules, hazardous activities and special rules, rules for specific vehicles by type, and liability stated twice but in slightly different terms. So, what we are proposing is, let's keep it simple. Let's make it easy for the residents to find what the right answer is and help our city staff be able to serve up to the residents and answer those questions. So, what we're proposing is that we consolidate everything about sidewalks and natural surface trails, rules in Chapter 70, and everything that's about the paths in Chapter 78. So, you've got one stop shopping for those answers. So, here are a bunch of the gaps that Paul was mentioning. We don't, we may use some of these in lists of prohibited items, but we don't define what they are. So, if you ask most people what they meant by a dirt bike, you might get 50 different answers from 50 different people. So, I think it's important that we provide clarification. Interesting enough, we don't even define what a golf cart is. Okay? And that's important under the Georgia Code, okay? And then there's a lot of other things. We don't even define what we mean when we say a multi-use path, or now the National Design Standards for Highways and Transportation say shared use paths, but it's in the Georgia Code. So, maybe we can use that. Same way, what is a natural surface trail instead of a nature trail? Because we've got users of these in other green spaces, not just at nature areas, and then the boardwalks. Then we have incomplete definitions. In other words, it's partially there, but could be using some refresh. And one of the key things that we found was electric bicycles. The city was on the breaking ground with the Georgia Code and introduction of terms of reference for electric bicycles in 2001. The state updated their definitions, codes and classes of what's permissive as well as power level, which is important, because power equals speed. In 2019, the city did not follow suit. And so, this is part of the challenge we see with the opportunities on micro mobility. What do we mean by micro mobility? It's all that stuff that's out there, okay? And it could be, what we've traditionally seen is human-powered, skateboards, skates, unicycles, bicycles and stuff, but it also can now be electric powered or a mix of both. So, I think it's important that we kind of, you know, capture that and modernize that to be on the leading edge again, to help our residents be safe. So, here is a slide that shows you kind of the span of these micro mobility devices. Mostly, you're seeing the ones with the asterisk, there's actually a definition in the Georgia Code, other things are not. But there's another thing to consider, and that's ADA considerations, because the U.S. Access Board talks about other power-driven mobility devices to assist the disabled, to move in your community on permitted areas. So, I think that that's important consideration. We update, include all these things that are not defined, to say, "Yes, they're okay," and give a way ahead for residents on that. The one on the right, EPAMD, that's a mouthful, the Electropersonal Assisted Mobility Device, that's the Segway. Everybody remember the commercial product, the Segway. So, here are, so, we were talking about the devices with public risk. Okay, so, the snapshot on the left is actually from the Peachtree City Police Department, which engaged the public on Facebook to talk about some of these things because they were speeding on the path. They were not, obviously, e-moto, or basically electric motorized bike, okay? Should be actually registered as an electric motorcycle, subject to state registration, driver's licenses, insurance, and all those other things. But they're not. They're not being done that. And then we have other things that probably are dirt bikes, by category, by design. So, that's the second picture from the left, where you see a torso with a little, what looks like a little dirt bike. And I saw this young person over near Cross Town Kroger operating, and I said, "Hey, what you got there?" He said, "This is my electric bike." I said, "That's not an electric bike." He says, "Yeah, it is." And, "Oh, well," I said, "It's a dirt bike." He said, "No, I put street tires on it." Okay? Not manufactured to National Design Traffic Safety Standards, doesn't have the class of 1, 2, or 3 defined by the Georgia Code, and obviously, and probably exceeds 20 miles an hour in operation. So, these are, you know, way overpowered by the Georgia Code. Then we have the other pictures there, and these are real. They, people on social media talk about how they can buy their bikes or they're sold, saying that they go these fast speeds, or these scooters, and, "Oh, by the way, you can also modify them to go even faster." So, this is what we're seeing speeding on the paths. Okay? And so, that's just what we need to address. Now, I know, I've been working with GoGeorgia, which is the state bicycle and pedestrian advocate, and we're going to have at their State Bike Walk Live Summit in Columbus in October, a roundtable. We're going to talk about this and maybe propose some Georgia state legislation to close down the loopholes in Georgia Code. Other states are doing that right now. Let's talk about slow vehicles. So, golf carts. Everyone has, talks about golf carts? How many of you really actually have a golf cart? Because golf carts are only operated on private property or the golf course. Under the Georgia Code, if you operate off of that private property, it's a motorized cart, and that's been the way since 1974. But we, you know, it's convenient. We'd say, "Oh, golf cart, it looks like that." But today, the motorized carts we see, most of them have no rack for hauling a bag of golf, you know, but some people do use them from their home to go to the golf course. That's good. But there's characteristics and speed and capabilities that should be addressed. And one of the things that we came into agreement was size. We have, some manufacturers are building these things that go 55 inches wide. When you have a path that's 10 feet wide, that's 120 inches. So, if you've got vehicles going in two directions, how much is left over for other people going in the other direction? And then we've got the tunnels, you know, so we've got narrow tunnels, too. We hear and see incidences of carts that are too large getting crashed in the tunnels. Okay, so, we think that a standard could be established by the city as far as upper limit on width, and certainly length is probably not so much an issue, but now there are, like, some of them with three or four seats are the length of a car. The other thing is low-speed vehicles. Now, this is an interesting category. Peachtree City uses low, low-speed motorized vehicles, but the Georgia Code says low-speed vehicles. Unlike motorized carts, which the Georgia Code gave delegatives authority to communities to regulate and allow to use on local streets and in paths, there is no such provision in the Georgia Code for low-speed vehicles. In other words, it's not defined that you have the authority to put them on a, what, you know, an alternate mode transportation network. That's for your consideration. We've discussed it and considered that there is a, there may be a challenge about that the vehicle is, has the stated condition, the low-speed motorized vehicle is allowed on paths only in a mode or other restriction that does not allow the vehicle to exceed 20 miles per hour. Okay? Well, do all of the low-speed vehicles being delivered or purchased by people today have those capabilities? We're not certain. But I'll give you a little anecdote. I was in front of the Fred waiting to go inside a concert this summer, and there was a group of people, adults, in front of me, going through, waiting to go through security and get ticketed in into the venue. One of the adults, very animated, was talking about her vehicle experience. She says she was tired of the governor, and she's buying a new one, and the first thing she's going to do is have that governor removed. So, you know, modification of vehicles to go faster is a real problem, but our challenge is, we don't have any ability to inspect those under the law, and nor can we require that. And this is, and so that also carries over to low-speed vehicles. Manufacturers, in fact, are lobbying to allow them to go faster, which is, you know, problematic as it is. So, we talked about this. We agree that the low-speed vehicles should be, also be size-limited at a minimum, okay? The pros, of course, consideration as a group, that they've been permitted in the city since 2001. When they were innovated in the market, everyone remembers the, what's the name of that? The gems, gems, the bubble cars, okay? Those were the first low-speed vehicles manufactured, mass-produced in the United States. And they do have improved safety vehicles over carts because of that they're allowed to go higher speeds. The cons is that there was uncertain as to speed controls on the paths. Are they, in fact, being used? And slowing down the low-speed vehicles to be respective of the design speed for the paths and all users, which is 20 miles per hour. But we don't have a means to regulate speeds or establish speeds limits below 25 miles per hour. And the other thing that's a notable point is that the low-speed vehicles are supposed to have these amber strobe lights on them under the Georgia Code. How many of you seen them? Almost nobody, okay, except for an occasional gem. Okay, so, so again, we may not have a full adherence of even the Georgia Code on that class vehicle. So, when we, when we're, these are our big picture item ideas that we've come together as a group to say, you know, we think that there are some opportunities to update the ordinances, to make it clear for residents, and assist city staff, the police department code. But any revisions, we talked about this, should address immediate resident safety concerns, simplify access to essential information, incorporate current Georgia Code definition and operating requirements, fill all ordinance gaps and loopholes in safe operations, safeguard against consumer product exploitation of regulatory gaps, promote public traffic safety education and standards, and enhance public police code and code enforcement efforts. So, if you give us guidance to proceed, of course, we're going to prepare the initial draft of that, that will be thoroughly viewed and incorporate the city departments in that review and development process to ensure it's consistent, compliant, and usable. And then we bring back those proposed updates at a future city council workshop. But the real opportunity is afterwards, is that after this has been done, and that is the opportunity to develop enhanced safety information education products to go for students, for seniors, for these micro mobility devices, and then more on target, the carts and low-speed vehicles. So, that's our presentation for today, and we're open to any questions you might have.
Counsel?
I'll start, since like I always do. So, I appreciate this. You know it's a big deal with me. You've heard me talk about this in the past. I've been run off the road. You know, it's been bad out on the cart paths, and I feel for the people who walk and for riding bicycles, just plain old bicycles, because the speeds of these are way above the 20 miles per hour. I can't determine what it is, but it's certainly way above that. And I like the concept that you brought up here, and I would love to suggest to this council and maybe make a motion that we kick this back to you, to do the first draft of a new ordinance for 70 and 78, and bring it back to us. So, at least we've got something to work with as opposed to just a presentation now. And I don't know what the other council members think about a motion on that, but I'd like to make a motion that we do, let's send it back.
Let's get comments from all of our...
I've got a motion, Madam Mayor. I just made a motion.
I'll second the motion to further this discussion.
Do we need a motion to further a discussion, Mr. Meeker? Why would we need a motion? I would 100% support this.
If you can make a motion, I don't know if it's needed. I think they're just looking for feedback from council, but council's free to make a motion.
Well, for what it's worth, additional conversation, I support this 100%. To me, this is exactly why we have the Transportation Advisory Group, and I look forward to the, everything that you talked about, especially highlighted for me would be the definitions. Also highlighted for me would be understanding and tying in to GoGeorgia, understand what we have at the state level, and then, of course, updating our 1974 ordinances. I think this is very good work, and this is exactly why the tag group is here. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Are there any other comments you want to share?
Yeah, I'll share some comments. I enjoyed, Paul, your reference to potential conflicts on the path. I think almost everybody who's on the path has had a potential conflict. In fact, I sat here on this dais last year and talked about walking my dog on the path and almost getting by an e-bike, and of course, discuss the different classes of the e-bikes. I don't think anybody could possibly object to us doing the complete revision of this, you know, the ordinance, incorporating all of that. Are you guys ready to do that? That's my question. Do you think you're ready, or is this, you're continuing to do research? Are you up to the point of actually putting pen to paper and trying to solve this problem?
And as a way of digging into that research, we've actually done some pen and ink and seeing, kind of like, heading our internal debate and discussions to come back to say, "Yes, we think we have firm ground for that." All those missing definitions, we already got graphs for. So, it's a matter of wordsmithing at this point to develop a coherent, cohesive recommendations for line in and out of Chapter 70 and 78. And again, we're only focusing on path rules and vehicles. We're not touching upon registration. I think that's pretty well-covered. We're not, we haven't discussed that.
Does that need to be in the same ordinance, or not? Or is that covered under?
It's in Chapter 78.
So, if you're reviewing 70 and 78, those will come forward with new ordinance or updates of ordinances within that. Did I, did I hear you right, gentlemen?
No, actually, I think what he's saying, let me, let me jump in.
Okay.
I think what the discussion is, Clint, is that they're not the ones that are charged with, at this point in time, doing the registration thing. We have other people working on that? Or is it just, or are you guys, I know you guys have given us input on that with regard to front and back, you know, registration size. This, I know that that's, is that something you're also prepared to take on, like?
So, right now, our revisions have not been focused on registration.
Okay.
Right? We could, but part of the, this effort is not letting perfection be the enemy of good enough. We could do absolutely everything and never get anywhere. So, we're limiting our scope so we can get some tangible results we feel will impact safety and people's sense of security on the path system.
Excellent.
Then my other question is for Justin. Justin, are we ready for the city staff to go ahead? And the registration issue should be, I mean, if we're going to redo the ordinance, and if that's a part of it, then it should be done like lock, stock, and barrel, I would think, to be complete, if it can be?
I mean, registration, and Kelly, you can jump in if you want to here, I don't think our registration process is broken. It's just a matter of, we've talked about the decals. They've given us, they've given us their input on where they, where the decal should be, front windshield, lower passenger side of the front, and then the back on the lower deck, or like, right below there. So, I've discussed that with you all, and you all have asked us to move forward with that. We've also discussed shortening the height of the, like, the numbers would stay the same, but kind of getting rid of the wasted space, so it's easier to fit. So, we are working on that. So, we are working on that. Staff is getting numbers, we're getting new numbers from the company we work with that does the decals. So, we will have something, I think, next month.
Do you want Dustin to speak to where we are with that? It's going to be a delayed billing?
Yeah. I have asked y'all before too, I think we've discussed this too, that we may, we may ask y'all to make the current registrations valid a little longer through next year as we roll this out.
Yeah, we just, it's like a cruise ship, you know, getting all the, all these things ordered and getting everything in line, depending on what you guys want to do. So, we may end up having to delay registration a couple of months to make it all happen if you want to move to the front and back with the decals themselves. So, that's, I've got everything is in line to be ordered. I just don't have final pricing since we talked about reducing the size of the decals from the, to the smaller size. So, I'm waiting on the final pricing on that. But, you know, we definitely can make it all happen. It's just a matter of we, the marketing and getting the word out and making sure that everybody's aware of the changes before we do the full registration, because you know, it's 13,000 to 16,000 carts that we'll have to replace decals on, and it's kind of a big undertaking. So, but we're definitely prepared to move forward.
In the middle of renovations on City Hall.
Oh, yeah, and City Hall renovations as well.
All right. So, let's, thank you, Dustin. That's exactly what we needed to know, I think. So, to Paul's point, let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good. We have a focus here today on Chapter 70 and Chapter 78, and it's ready to move forward. And a motion and a second on the table. Councilmember Johnson, do you have any other questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would be interested. I think it's very alarming to me whenever you say we have overlap and our ordinances are confusing. So, yeah, I would definitely appreciate our city having clarification. You know, every choice that we make affects our citizens, and as these new devices come out and we have citizens who are investing in these, you know, I would rather, you know, we're probably behind a little bit because people are possibly investing in things that could, in the future, you know, not be part of our regulations. So, the sooner we can do that, then I think the fewer people we upset. But there's already going to be an amount of people that will be upset probably by us doing this, but ultimately, safety is what we want and clarification. So, I would appreciate the tags.
I have one more question. Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Johnson, anything else?
That's all.
Ms. Brown? Are you guys looking at the issue of the governors on there and any of those aspects, or is that going to be covered under registrations and inspections?
Well, not really. I mean, there are existing descriptions in the code regarding carts about not modifying them. It's also in the Georgia code about not modifying them. Low-speed vehicles, our question is, is how do you know that, in fact, it does have that capacity as described in the ordinance to actually operate? That add addition to the low-speed vehicles was done 20 years ago. So, is that actually a technical delivery of consumer products today? I don't know. So, that's, you know, something that the tag can review and maybe at a subsequent update when looking at the body of everything, or maybe it's passed on at this time and done in a drill down in 2026, a future action. So, I mean, we're not saying that should or shouldn't, we're just, that's an area for further investigation. But Mayor, to your question about Go Georgia, Go Georgia is a state consumer bicycle pedestrian advocate. They actually are funded by the Georgia State Office of Traffic Safety to provide Georgia residents with safety information and education. And then another noted point about our leadership, the Georgia Municipal Association at their website has a page talking about personal transportation vehicles, which is what the Georgia code calls motorized carts today. And guess what? They have as a model example ordinance, an extract of Peachtree City's ordinance for Chapter 78. So, yeah, so that, that's being spread around again is not necessarily the latest or best. So, I think we can show our best to our residents on qualified excellence is right where we're going, right? So, that's what, that's where, that's where I'll just leave you with those thoughts.
All right. All right.
Do we need to modify the, any part of the motion to identify what they're going to work on, or just?
I think it was clear, but I don't know. Stacy, did we get a clear motion on that?
Can you repeat the motion?
Okay.
Mr. Maker?
I thought it was just that they were to move forward for what they presented.
That's fine.
On 70 and 78.
You'll get into the weeds more when you actually see the ordinance revision that comes forward, but I think in terms of...
Okay, that works for me then.
I understood the motion to be that the general direction was fine to council.
Exactly. Fix it up, send it back to us, is basically what it is.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and thank you. Thank you so much. I know these guys work and they took the time to be here today. We really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Presentation A, 2025 community survey results. Are we ready?
Hopefully.
Good morning. Do we have audio?
Good morning. Can y'all hear me now?
Hard to hear audio.
Happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Noah. Welcome.
Turn it down, turn it down.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can y'all see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and happy to speak to you, counsel. My name is Noah Huber. I'm a survey analyst here at Zen City. We've been partnering with the city since 2023 to go over community survey results. So, glad to be here today to talk about the May to July survey results from this year. I want to start this discussion today by talking about our methodology and our sample behind this survey. We surveyed 499 respondents from May to July this year, and we used a technique called rake weighting. Some people also call it iterative proportional fitting. And that's to make sure that our final sample in the survey matches the demographic makeup of the community of Peachtree City. So, on the left here, we see these light blue bars on the chart. That's our raw sample, all of the respondents that we got. And then that middle dark blue bar, that is our weighted sample after we use that rake weighting technique to make sure that it lines up with that final gray bar on the right, and that is from the U.S. Census data. With that, I'll go ahead and get started with the actual meat of the presentation.
Can I interject for just a second, please?
Absolutely.
It's very difficult to see. Is there any way they can get the video to either come up on our screens in front of us, or at least big enough on the screen that we can read what's on it?
It's in your packet. It's in your packet.
I know, but the audience can't read, see this? I mean, it's like there.
That's what I'm saying. You had to make sure the audience can see it and...
Now, that's cutting off...
Stop right there. There you go.
Yeah, that seems to be, yeah, that seems to be good.
Look on with your neighbor if you need to. That's okay.
I will have to. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and please interrupt with questions as they come up. The first question that we ask in the survey is, how is the overall quality of life in Peachtree City? And the score is incredible. 87% of respondents said that they had a positive quality of life in Peachtree City. Only 11% are neutral, so sort of undecided, and only 2% are negative. So, out of 100 respondents, only two of them are going to say that they have some kind of negative quality of life in Peachtree City.
Mr. Huber, can we stop right there?
Yes, please.
Is that commonly seen, 87%? I mean, you're a professional at this. You survey cities. Is that something you usually see?
No, ma'am. Absolutely not. I'll go down. We have what we call benchmarking scores, so taking a look at...
I've been reading ahead, I guess.
Yes, no, please. It's an important question. So, we take a look at the national average of all of the cities that we partner with, and then we also have a cohort score, which is the average across similar cities in terms of size to Peachtree City. So, the triangles on these bars are the national averages, and then the squares are those cohort averages, and those blue circles, those are the scores from Peachtree City. So, when it comes to the overall quality of life in Peachtree City, the national average is at 67%, the cohort average is at 76%, and Peachtree City score is at 87%. So, far above both the national and cohort levels.
Thank you. Wow.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Great news. Wonderful news. And that's the same for the likelihood that that's, that second sort of middle section there is the likelihood to recommend Peachtree City as a place to live. 82% of respondents say that they would, they're likely to recommend Peachtree City. And again, far above the national average of 64% and the cohort average of 82%. And then that final one there, when it comes to these quality of life scores, is the likelihood to still be living in Peachtree City five years from now. 74% of respondents said that they're likely, five years from now, to still be living in Peachtree City. And again, that's above the national and cohort averages. So, to your point, yes, these are relative to other parts of the country and the national average, far above and much higher.
Thank you. Wow.
Absolutely. So, the next thing I wanted to briefly cover are some community characteristics, some other scores that we asked respondents about. The top score is overall sense of safety. That's at 88%, which is a very high number. Reliability of waste collection services also very, very high. They're at 83%. We see a 9% increase from the previous cycle, which was May to July of 2024. Overall cleanliness and maintenance also very high at 82%. And as you can see, all of these bars are far above 50%. Sands here at the bottom, availability of affordable housing is at 40%, but that number is relatively high compared to the national average, compared to those cohort scores. And I will say that this is by far the hardest one across the country, even in Canada. So, I'd like to go back to that sort of benchmarking scores. I think that's maybe one of the best ways to talk about these scores. So, at the top there, we have availability of affordable housing, again, relatively strong compared to the national average cohort scores, availability of jobs that pay a living wage, access to quality healthcare services, and access to quality education. These are all incredible reasons why people have and say that they have a really high quality of life here in Peachtree City. I also wanted to quickly discuss some of the more neutral scores or some of those scores that are more negative. Quality of roads was on there, sort of near the bottom of the list in Peachtree City in terms of satisfaction. That being said, still very high at 61%. We did see a 7% increase in negativity and negative sentiment towards satisfaction or dissatisfaction, but even then, we're still looking at 18%. So, less than 1 in 5 responded saying that they're dissatisfied with the quality of roads in Peachtree. The availability of a variety of arts and cultural events is also on the relatively lower end of satisfaction in Peachtree City. But again, this is higher than the national score, and since the previous cycle in July, or excuse me, May to July 2024, we've seen a 7% increase in overall satisfaction with the availability of variety of arts and cultural events. A lot to cover in this report, so I'd like to save some time for questions at the end, but there are a few rotating questions at the end here that we asked to respondents in Peachtree City. One of these questions was, would you support a citywide mandatory curbside trash and recycling program billed with your annual property taxes? 43% of respondents said that they would be in support of this. 18% say that they were neutral, which in this context sort of means undecided, and 30% said that they don't support it, negative sentiment there. With this, we've seen a 15% drop in positive sentiment, so support and 13% increase in negative sentiment. Most of those drops came from the middle-aged group, the 35 to 54-year-olds, and the senior-age group, the 55-year-olds. We also saw a considerable decline among female respondents. So, this is kind of the makeup of those scores going up or down within those demographic groups and then sort of resulting in the overall score there on the right. The additional rotating question that we had was about asking about transparency and increasing citizen input into the decision-making process and what could be done to improve those things. At the top here, we have implementing online platforms for submitting feedback and suggestions, and that's at 51%. So, there we're looking at half of respondents, half of residents saying that implementing these online platforms for submitting feedback and suggestions is the top thing that the city can do to improve transparency and increase citizen input in the decision-making process. Next up there at 33%, so 1 in 3 respondents, said providing regular surveys on city initiatives. And then the third one there also at almost 1 in 3 respondents is increasing public forums/ city hall meetings, and there it's at 32%, but we've seen an 8% increase since the previous cycle, since May and July, May through July of last year. The last few things that I wanted to cover here were just a few demographic changes in those overall quality of life scores. We see a big jump with the 18 to 34-year-olds, the lower sort of younger age group, all the way up to 93%. So, more than 9 out of 10 respondents saying that they have a positive overall quality of life. And we also see a pretty large jump, nine points compared to the previous cycle, among those who have a high school degree or less, all the way up to 89%. Those are sort of the main things that I wanted to cover with this presentation. There's much more in the report, but I'm happy at this time to sort of answer any questions that there might be, whether that's regards, with regard to the methodology and sample, to any additional data that perhaps we didn't cover. So, Madam Mayor, counsel, I look forward to your questions.
Amazing. Thank you. This is very, very positive. Counsel, questions? I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a que, I'm going to go last. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, but I was going to let the ladies go.
You can go ahead.
Somebody's going to go.
You always let me go first.
Mr. Holland?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
I need you to go back in the presentation, back to the top of it, please, where you started to talk about the initial stuff about Peachtree City. And I'll go down a couple of slides where it starts to compare us to cohorts, and it gives...
Absolutely.
Hold on, I don't know where that is. It goes, going too fast.
Here?
Yeah, there was one in there about the arts and cultural. And that's the one that I picked out when I, when I reviewed this. That one shows basically we're average. And to me, I see that because both the cohorts and the national and us, we're all jumbled together. It's something that I've been, I've brought up a number of times, that it's time for us to do a little bit more on the arts and culture and the arts and cultural events here in this city. And this does tend to prove my point that I brought up months ago, that we need to take a look at that as a council. And one of the things I said was, we need a cultural, an arts advisory group. So far, that hasn't gone very far, but I am glad to see that the actual results that you've seen just kind of uphold what I've been trying to push here in Peachtree City. So, I want to thank you for that piece of results.
Anything else?
Nope.
Ms. Brown?
Well, I'm going to piggyback on what Clint just said. We've talked about doing public art, but I just want to make sure nobody misunderstands that I do not think that we need to build any kind of an art venue or center from that, just to piggyback on that. Because Chilis is opening up a huge one, and I think that being in the close enough area for everybody here to participate in, there's no need for us to expend any money in that direction. What I was kind of like a little upset about with the presentation, just not being critical, but there seemed to be a few slides you showed up there that I didn't have. I hadn't been able to review them, and from where I'm sitting, I can't even see it on the board. I think that's a problem. Okay? And then the other part of that is 499 respondents, I don't think is enough, but that's my opinion. And I'm sure that you probably will say, oh, that's more than normally participating based on a city or size. I don't think I want to listen to just 499 people, but thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for this information. It was a little bit hard to follow along because it kind of jumped around, but I think I did find each of the pages, so. But thank you for this, all this information. All of this is great to go back to and to look at in the future, to see where we stand. And I love the comparison with us with the cohorts and national averages. I think that's very helpful, so thank you for all of this. I think that's very helpful, so thank you for all of this.
As a wrap-up, for me, I see, number one, in your opinion, what can the city do to improve? That's what this is all about, to improve transparency and increase citizen input. I would have thought that our citizens believe they have that avenue. We certainly get the emails, right? And we read those emails. But number one is implement online platforms for submitting feedback and suggestions. I love that. That gives us something to do, to talk about and how we can move forward and maybe create some kind of online platform to do exactly that. Eighty-seven percent Peachtree City, thank you. That's an amazing number, especially in comparison with our cohorts and the national average. And then I always, when we see these surveys, I always run an online statistical significance calculator. And I'm sure ZenCity knows way more about this than I do. I ran two. We need to maintain a ninety-five percent confidence level and a P-value of five percent or less. So I ran a SurveyMonkey, calculating your sample size would have to be three hundred and eighty-four, and we had four ninety-nine. And then secondly, I kind of ran it backwards. I wanted to see a ninety-seven percent confidence level, and we came up with four hundred and sixty-six as a sample size. Can you, you know, I'm confident, based on online statistical significance calculators, that this is statistically significant. Can you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam Mayor. Like you had mentioned, four hundred and ninety-nine respondents, I believe, or I am, I suppose, very confident in offering a, what we call a representative sort of sample, a representative understanding of the community of Peachtree City. From my point of view, our methodology, we don't like to use the term confidence level only because this is a non-probability survey. It's online, which means that not every single person has a complete random chance of taking the survey. That would require going back to a method like opening a phone book and just calling random numbers. That being said, the vast majority of Americans are online, the vast majority of seniors are online, and we collected respondents, four hundred and ninety-nine of them, which again is more than enough to conclude that this is a representative sort of representation of the thoughts, opinions, sentiment, and emotions of the residents in Peachtree City. So in short, yes, I am very confident that the results from this survey give us a really good understanding of what the residents think and feel.
All right. Thank you. Council, any last thoughts before we move forward in our agenda? I just want to thank you for being with us this morning. This is an incredible effort. Thanks, very positive.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on in our agenda, we have public comment.
Madam Mayor, we have eight. The first person signed up to speak is Denise Bell.
Good morning, and if you'll forgive me, I'm run of the rare aging people who have to take off correction to actually read what I have in front of me.
You sound good, but you can move that microphone down if it's more convenient for you.
Can we bring up the lights?
Thank you, ma'am. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'd like to begin this morning by thanking the mayor, the city council, and the staff who've been working so hard to address the deer population in our city. I would only ask if they would please consider banning the feeding of the deer in this management plan. This appears in many deer management plans in other areas of the country. Culling the herd isn't as effective if we have food continually attracting more and domesticating the ones we already have here. We are aware that any law or ban is very hard to enforce, but it might help deter some of them. I would also ask you to continue to work on addressing the deer in our residential areas. We know this is where they cause most of the problems, and I'm aware that is also a much more complex situation. I have the advantage of having grown up in a very small community, which was mostly farms, and in our daily life, we dealt with animal husbandry. We knew what was best for people and for their surrounding wildlife. Please consider if there's a way to provide this knowledge to some of our citizens who have never needed to learn about it. It would only benefit whatever management program you finalize. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next signed up to speak is Mr. Lloyd Smith.
Good morning, Council and Mayor. I want to say congratulations. You should be proud of that survey.
Wait, wait. Mr. Smith, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Tip the micro-- tip it up so it's right in front of you.
And I live--
And then tell us, wait, wait, wait. And tell us your name and your neighborhood.
I live in the Chimneys neighborhood.
Thank you.
And thank you. I want to start out by saying that I am, as Lloyd Smith, I am the president of the largest pickleball club in Georgia, and our home is Peachtree City. And we are very proud of that, and we're very proud of Peachtree City. We have an election year coming up, and we're gonna have a stronger presence in supporting candidates this year than we did two years ago. I want the council to understand that there are two private venues, indoor venues, for pickleball, starting up in Peachtree City. They're here because we're here. They're here because we're here and the thousands of other players who play around Peachtree City who do not belong to our club. But they're here because they looked at the recreational master plan and they looked at the surveys. And that's why they're here, because pickleball is important and very popular. After years of waiting and planning, we are on the point of voting for eighteen new pickleball courts in Peachtree City. And Clint, I was told that on several occasions and to several people, you have promised twenty-one new beautiful pickleball courts in Peachtree City. We have never asked for twenty-one, so eighteen, voting for eighteen new courts should not be an issue for you. So we hope that'll take place. In Peachtree City today, there are two, at least two petitions floating around now to save Log House. If we get less than eighteen courts, our pickleball board will authorize us and our seven hundred membership to start working on these petitions. I do not want to see that happen. I want to see this end. Let's vote for eighteen courts, and let's get it done for Peachtree City. I believe that John Riley has a just cause, and his backyard and his home is becoming unlivable, and I think we need to address that. We can do that by building the eighteen courts and ending this. If we go on and we do less and we get these petitions to save, let's save Log House, you're going to see speaker after speaker after speaker in here talking about the lack of courts and saving Log House. Let's end it. You know, this is an election year, and there are far more important things to discuss. Let's vote the eighteen courts and get them done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next to speak is Ms. Sue Reed.
Lloyd is taller than I am. Good morning. My name is Sue Reed. I live in Peachtree City, and once again, I am here representing over seven hundred people that belong to the pickleball club and all of the other, all of the other people in the city that play pickleball that don't even belong to our club. It is for all these people that I have come before you over and over and over again. I am also speaking today because I am unfortunately unable to attend the meeting in two weeks. Respectfully, Mr. Holland, I have heard you say that you're getting pretty tired about talking about pickleball. But every time you say something, you change your mind and say the complete opposite. We don't know which Clint Holland is going to be voting when the final vote comes down for what we have been fighting for for the last three years. Will it be the Clint Holland that has made reinsurance and promises over and over to us, or one that keeps just changing his mind? Will it be the Ms. Brown that says she will only go for twelve courts? Or will it be the Ms. Brown who at a different meeting said she would possibly go for twenty-four? Will it be necessary for us to have more surveys that we didn't listen to? Or maybe another committee like the Recreation Committee, who people say just because they say so doesn't mean that we have to vote for it? Why are we wasting our time? It's been two and a half years now since the SPOS vote, and prices have almost doubled. Do you really want to wait another two and a half years to make this decision so that prices that are quoted now can even double again? Wait that long, and the number of pickleball players in this city will have doubled, too. So eighteen courts might not even be enough then. You're tired of hearing from us, and we're tired of talking about the same thing over and over again. You cannot tear down the Log House courts and only build twelve courts at Meadfield. It has to be eighteen, or we only gain six courts. Please, let's put this to rest and vote for the eighteen courts that the city needs so badly. Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next to speak is Mr. Steve Brown.
Thank you. Hate that clock still. It's a disgrace. Mayor Lerner, your conduct at the August twenty-first council meeting was deeply disappointing. While other council members engaged in thoughtful, respectful dialogue, your behavior stood out as combative and unprofessional. I want to commend council members Holland and Brown for standing up for the taxpayers. Their push to reduce our reserves and roll back the military reflects the kind of fiscal stewardship Peachtree City desperately needs. For anyone to claim council member Brown's request came out of nowhere is simply dishonest. She has been advocating for this for two years. Watch the February retreat video. She made her position clear multiple times when asked by the city manager, what do you want to do on the budget? She voted against the FY 2025 budget for the exact same reasons. It didn't come out of nowhere. The truth is, her voice has been consistently marginalized. Last year, the city manager even told her in an email that he didn't have time to address her budget concerns. That's not transparency, that's obstruction. Let's be honest, the city's budget playbook hasn't changed in years. It's add more employees, inflate expenses, expand the budget, raise taxes, ignore critical maintenance, and hike the city fees. It's a formula that requires no vision, no innovation, and no accountability. In all the budget discussions I've watched over the past four years, I've never once heard the mayor ask, where can we find efficiencies? Or how do we ease the tax burden on our citizens and our businesses? Instead, it's always more spending, more taxes, and when questioned, blame the staff. What's worse, we've watched as land zone for corporate and industrial uses, our future tax base has been rezoned for residential development. That short-sighted decision will haunt us in the future when we need all that revenue to offset our rising residential taxes. You adopted HB 581 and have the audacity to propose a hundred and forty billion, I mean, million dollars of new recreation projects. That is crazy. How in the world are you gonna staff and maintain those, especially with tens of millions in outstanding maintenance and hundreds of millions in added additional expenses? The fire station on South Seventy-four, the latest example. And when the mayor told WSB Television that the sweeping new expenditures in that year's budget wouldn't cost the taxpayers a cent, it became painfully clear, we have a competency problem. And hopefully, we're gonna change that in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and respected council members. My name is Amanda Reese, and I live in the Plantara Ridge subdivision. I'm here today because I'm concerned about some of the things that I've heard in recent public comments regarding the availability of competitive roller hockey in Peachtree City. I've heard other members of the community stand up and claim there is no travel hockey program despite their own family members having been active participants in the program. I'm here to affirm that Peachtree City Hockey Association has had middle school, high school, and age group-specific travel teams for as long as we have been associated with Peachtree City hockey. If you look at, go to Kedron Rink, look at the banners hanging up. Those came from somewhere. We have programs. I know that Doug Mahoffer, for at least the last decade, has been involved in either coaching directly or behind the scenes, helping to create those teams, at times deferring to other coaches to help with administering the teams and scheduling. My daughter Lauren has been the goalie on some of those travel teams over the last few years. So we know firsthand what it is to go and travel to these other rinks to support her participation in representing our city. You might remember her. She was here a few months back in her full goalie gear, speaking about the importance of enclosing the Kedron Rink. Looking at recent years of our travel teams, I know the individual coaches, some were given the latitude to manage and schedule their competitive teams under the guidance of Mr. Mahoffer. Unfortunately, this resulted in a much less consistent structure, and at times, coaches were cobbling together teams for serious competition at the last minute because different athletes were called to other events, had other shifting priorities. Over the summer, a new board came in, Peachtree City Hockey Association. They recognized that this put our competitive teams at a disadvantage, having to pull in bodies to fill a team. That's not how you build a winning team. So they established a more structured approach this year. They had formalized tryouts that you had to sign up for in advance, and they sent out formal offer letters. They've gotten sponsorships to help reduce the cost, to make it more accessible to others who may not have been able to afford travel hockey in the past. I love to see the passion for hockey from so many families in Peachtree City and the surrounding area, and I hope that if they truly are committed to a higher level of competitive roller hockey for the kids, that they contact Peachtree City Hockey Association to understand and be a part of the changes being made to improve the consistent competitiveness of our teams. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next to speak is Mr. John Riley.
Good morning. Ms. Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
My name is John Riley. I live in the Retreat subdivision. As you know, directly behind the Braylon Rec Center pickleball courts. At the risk of providing some pickleball, maybe overload and redundancy, I would like to address some recent issues in the pickleball community. As you know, there's a petition afoot to save the Braylon Courts. My inbox is full, as I'm sure yours is. I fully respect and understand pickleball players' desire to keep these courts. After all, I am a player and enjoy this wildly popular, wildly noisy sport. The petitioners seek to address one side of this equation, the wildly popular side. What they don't address is the wildly noisy side, the starting its sun-up wildly noisy side within a hundred feet of some residences. One of my neighbors contributed a letter in support to the courts. They don't believe there's a problem, and technically, they're right. They don't have a problem. They live over five hundred feet away from the pickleball courts, can walk in and out as they please. Just last week, Boise, Idaho shut down courts in response to noise issues. It is the repetitive, percussive, impulsive, high-pitched sound of the game that has caused Boise to join the likes of Lake Oswego, Oregon, Long Beach, California, Centennial, Colorado, Denver, Colorado, Prairie Village, Kansas, Niagara Falls, New York, Seattle, Washington, and many others in taking action on this issue. Petitioners need to be reminded that this issue has been discussed here for over three years. Independently, via personal observation and experience and research done around the country, both the SPOS committee and the Recreation Master Plan developers recommended that new courts be built and the Braylon Courts be repurposed. Pickleball paddle manufacturer Paddle Tech recommends a good neighbor distance at least-- Pickleball paddle manufacturer Paddle Tech recommends a good neighbor distance at least three times greater than that between the courts and the residences at Braylon, along with the use of a buffer or noise mitigation materials. As you have recently supported the design of a complex at Mead Field, I would like to remind the petitioners that you intend to be adding courts, and you and staff have studied every side of this issue. You've gone to great lengths and been very careful to not impact another neighborhood as residents within close proximity to the Braylon courts have been impacted. I wish the process were faster, but I commend you for your efforts. I do not wish this issue on any other resident. All this has been a long way of saying, let's get the study and design done, let's build those eighteen public access courts at Mead Field, let's lay this petition issue to rest, and let's play some pickleball. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Okay, next we have Regina Char.
Whoops. She broke it. Okay. My name is Regina Char. I live in Spyglass subdivision, Spyglass Hill. I've been a resident here for thirty-two years, homeowner for that long as well. I have never done this before, and it saddens me that I have felt compelled to do this and speak this morning. I've never left a Peachtree City council meeting feeling embarrassed and ashamed of the behavior of any council members until the meeting of August twenty first. As a citizen's taxpayer and homeowner, I found the behavior of Mr. Holland and Ms. Brown to be disrespectful to not only all those in attendance, but to the hard-working staff of the city, Justin Strickland, Laura Brown, and the honorable Mayor Leonard. I stress honorable. It was obvious that Mr. Holland and Ms. Brown planned to hijack the budget vote, completely blindsiding all in attendance. It was an orchestrated ambush. If they felt so strongly to quote, "give back part of the reserve back to the citizens", end quote, why did they not raise this during the public meetings? It was grandstanding and downright irresponsible. Homeowners wouldn't even benefit from this. You're not representing the citizens. Apparently, you're trying to give cuts for businesses. I'm absolutely disgusted at the atrocious behavior and it's an embarrassment. I applaud city councilor, city council member Johnson for being level-headed and for voting no. Her comments were thoughtful and on point, especially for being put on the spot. I was grateful for her knowledge and thoughtful responses. The honorable Kim Leonard, as always, showed real leadership and willingness to have all parties heard while she still served the interest of the citizens, the citizens that fully expected our budget to be approved and passed as it was presented to us. Now that it's been tabled, I'd hope that there'll be public meetings for citizen input because I do not want a millage rollback by quote, "taking it from the reserves." It's fiscally irresponsible. Furthermore, as was stated, a millage rate would not change, would not affect homeowners this year. It gives the appearance that Mr. Holland and Mr. Brown and Ms. Brown are set on giving a break to businesses. Their stance of quote, "giving back to the citizens," end quote, falls sorely short. The citizens wanted the budget approved and passed and not be subjected to pettiness and showboating. Thank you. On a positive note, I really like those bicycle stands that you guys have installed out there.
Thank you. Next, please.
Last, we have Mr. Jim Forstall.
Good morning, Council. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm here today to update you on stat, well, first of all, I'm Jim Forstall, Longer Drive Spooner Ridge subdivision in Peachtree City. I'm here today to update you on the status of the newly established Fayette Hockey Club travel team organization. And let me say that we are focusing on age groups eight through fourteen. We're not trying to do all of the travel teams that exist in Peachtree City, which does not, it doesn't include the middle school, the high school, the sixteen and eighteen-year-old groups. We don't feel that we can do it all in our inaugural year. Okay, so, since I last addressed you at the August workshop, we obtained our five oh one C status and provided the letter from the IRS to Peachtree City. Additionally, we met on August twenty second with the Peachtree City Hockey Association, the rec league, and we agreed to coexist and coordinate the use of the hockey rink. This was on the twenty second. On the twenty fifth, three days later, we get a surprise email from your staff saying that we would not recognize our organization or allow us to use city facilities due to a longstanding city policy, not to sanction two organizations offering the same services. Big surprise. At my request, the city manager had a meeting yesterday with both hockey associations. We had not been consulted before that letter went out. Ultimately, your staff stands by their belief that the two hockey organizations are ordering, are offering the same services and that this situation exists because of a dispute between the two organizations. Contrary to your staff's opinion, we are not offering the same services. PHA hasn't had a travel team program since 2020, when I got involved with the Peachtree City hockey. The only reason we attended one travel tournament each year for the last three years is because two coaches took the initiative to cobbled together a rec team, all-star team. As I reported to the council previously, those teams competed admirably against other rock rec teams, but not couldn't against true travel teams. Thus, this caused big frustration for the players and their families and drove the initiative to form a travel hockey club. Thus, Fayette Hockey Club was formed. The club has the elite players in each age group, eight through fourteen.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask that we give him more time to finish his statement.
No, it's not fair to the others who have abided by the three minutes. We have a consistent policy and, Mr. Forstall, we take your comments very much to heart. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I'd just like to say that if you're not going to give me more time, I'm available if you have any questions.
And I'd be delighted to sit down with you. Thank you for that. Any other public comments?
No more, Madam Mayor.
Do we have any agenda changes, Council?
No.
No? All right. Work session discussion items, A, council meeting times, Dave Borkowski.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Council. Dave Borkowski, city engineer. This is related to the city hall renovations and maintenance work that we have just awarded a contract on. They have given us a preliminary construction schedule and it looks like the work is going to take place from November tenth is when they're going to mobilize and is expected to last until June of 2026. A lot of work involved. So to better enable this project, we're planning on moving the core functions out of city hall temporarily during this time. Court would go into temporary office space located here on site, and then the rest of staff would move to Kedron to work out of there during this, during this time. So we were thinking as well to help facilitate the contractor, you know, to take over the whole building, get in, get out in the shortest amount of time. We were going to request that council authorize a change to the council meeting times, to go to evening for both meetings during that timeframe, just to, you know, keep them working, you know.
In here?
Yes. That we would still meet in here, but just both meetings would be at night, kind of like it used to be. And just temporarily, you know, just during the construction time, just to give them full access and get it done quicker, basically. And we will, of course, work with public communications and everything to notify everybody of the change and make it as seamless as possible. So that's just the gist of it. Any questions?
Questions, Council?
No, you know, I hate the morning meetings. Hate them. I hate the morning meetings.
And just to clarify, too, there will be no work done in the council chambers itself. So court, like, we can still have them at night. The reason we want to move them tonight is so they can, they are going to be working in the lobby, in the downstairs lobby as well. So we just want them to be able to work Monday through Thursday and then be done on Thursday so they can have court on Fridays. We're going to move court to Fridays.
In here?
In here. And you all can meet Thursday evenings.
Okay.
And we will probably, we will most likely be utilizing that door while the lobby's being worked on.
As the entrance, yes.
All right. Big, big changes, people, for a temporary period of time. That might be an awfully rough time to adjust our golf cart registration schedule or solicit, you know, thirteen thousand people to come in and get new decals. We'll have to rethink, you know, I know that staff is cognizant of coordinating all this and I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Work session discussion item B, tree trimming and removal services bid, Jonathan Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Our current contract with our tree trimming and removal service ends September thirtieth. So we went out to bid for this service again, and this year, we received several responses. The bid was designed where the regular hours would determine the low bidder, and we actually ended in a tie this go-around. So, but after talking to finance and everything, our recommendation is going to go, be to go with the incumbent. The incumbent that had our current contract was total outdoors. We'll bring that at the next council meeting. Just a couple of things I want to note about it. We did change it up a little bit, the tree contractor. We asked for a discount rate if they use the compost site. However, running those numbers, it's going to be more beneficial to not allow them to use it just because of what we spend on grinding. In addition, the price we actually received this year is actually three dollars less than we had in the previous three-year contract. So it is, it is cheaper, they won't be using the compost site, so I think, I think it'll, it'll be a really, really good bid this go-around and maybe it will reduce some of the money we spend on removing trees.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah, based on what you just said, I hadn't even thought about this, but this is the contractor that cuts down, like, the pine trees that have pine beetle infestations?
It could be that or anything that is substantial enough that we are not capable of actually removing. So if it's a hazard, you know, we call them in when it's a hazard, depending on where it is.
Close to a house.
If it's very big, you know, our guys aren't equipped to necessarily go remove that. So what we can't do in-house, he's, he's our contract, it's basically almost like an on-call contract. They come in when we give them work orders to remove trees, and typically, like, it'll be, it's, it's a one-year contract with the option to renew for four additional years. So that's how this contract would run.
Not necessarily the subject of this, but what I just brought up with regard to the pine beetles, the question would be, are we cutting down trees that are infested and putting those trees in the mulch pit? And does that create a problem with spreading mulch elsewhere? Like, to spread the infestation, kind of?
It could, but typically, when, when you see a, okay, so Bob would probably be best for this as the arbiter, but I can, I can go to explain. When you see a dead tree from pine beetles, the pine beetles are already gone. They've already moved to the other trees. So really, when you talk to the forestry commission, like, mitigation of pine beetles, unless, if it was a forest, yeah, you could probably drop pesticides or something, but being an urban environment, really, the only mitigation they have is usually you take out the pine beetle tree and then you clear everything, you know, within twenty or forty feet around that tree because that's where they're actually at. As far as spreading, if there is, if there are pine beetles in the mulch, we personally have quit using the mulch around city facilities. We don't use it, if you, we still give it away for free, but we don't, we don't use it around our facilities or spread it out.
I'm just worried about, citizens come to the mulch pit thinking it's not infested with pine beetles, and if they're using it in their yards, especially a lot of pine trees in front yards have our mulch all around them, and that's just, I'm just wondering whether or not we should put any kind of like a, I mean, if we're putting possibly infested trees in there, maybe we need to put out a warning.
We can't, no.
I don't know. Just saying.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much. Work session discussion item C, master lease purchase, lease schedule number five, Kelly Bush.
Good morning. We do this every year at, once we pass the budget, we always come back to y'all with the intent to finance so that the capital equipment items that are in our CIP program, we purchase those through the year and then at the end of the year, we come back and we finance them. We have a master lease purchase agreement currently with Bank of America. This is our final year of that. We'll have better numbers. This is for y'all to pass next meeting. We'll have interest rate numbers and all of the paperwork next meeting. Council signs it, and then the closing, we would pass it on the eighteenth, the closing is on the twenty-third.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. New agenda item nine twenty-five oh one, fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment insurance reimbursement.
Morning, Madam Mayor, council members. I have a budget amendment for your approval this morning. The city received fifty thousand dollars in insurance reimbursement check for the damage to the guard rail at the Kedron Bridge due to a motor vehicle accident. Council's already awarded the contract for the guard rail replacement to Piedmont paving. This amendment simply recognizes the revenue for insurance reimbursement and increases the budget for citywide bridge maintenance to account for these repairs. So we're asking for your approval this morning of this amendment.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Okay, so you're looking for a motion on this one today?
Yes.
Motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars.
I have a question before you go.
Yes, sir.
Before we go to the motion. Are we going to just replace it with exactly the same thing or is it going to be a little bit more stout of a barrier than what was previously held?
Yeah, I think it's, it's an upgrade, but.
Okay. That's really all I'm looking for, is it is an upgrade of what we had, which was just two-by-fours basically in there.
Most definitely, yes. Yes, it'll meet the new guard rail standards and it'd be much beefier, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Council, any questions? Can I get a motion?
Clint, you want to do it?
I need a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve new agenda item oh nine two, twenty-five oh one, fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment insurance reimbursement for the Kedron built bridge guard rail replacement. You need the amount for fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand, yes.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Council staff topics, Council? None?
Plenty. Go ahead, Clint.
Okay. I've always had a problem with ordinance twelve eighteen since the day that it was passed. And so I will move in a, to, that we place an ordinance twelve eighteen on the September eighteenth city council meeting agenda to restore it to its original form prior to the amendment version introduced by Mayor Leonard and Councilwoman Johnson, acknowledging that the revised ordinance had imposed unnecessary constraints on our elected officials, myself and the rest of the council here, our ability to freely submit agenda items, thus limiting the very representation our citizens expect and deserve and voted for. I therefore, by reinstating the original version, we can reaffirm our commitment to transparency, accountability, and the democratic principle that every council member must have equal access to advocate for the best interests of the voters who elected them. And that is my motion.
I'll second your motion. I'd like to add an amendment that it be put on the October second meeting for discussion.
Instead of next meeting on October second? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay. I can certainly accept that amendment.
So, so in a workshop instead of a voting meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a discussion before we could do anything to put something to a vote, but.
So we have a motion and a second to the amended motion. So we have a motion and a second to the amended motion. Uh, I, first I've heard of this, uh, we passed a new ordinance early in twenty twenty-four. Allowing council members who have a majority support to put something on a meeting agenda. I think that's more generous than what I've seen in most cities, so. It was a very thoughtful, uh, ordinance and we passed it in city council, so in my opinion, we're, we're adequately, uh, making sure that we don't bring forward agenda items. That send our staff members on a wild goose chase, only to discover later that maybe there isn't a, a majority of support for that measure, so. Uh, we have set up right now a system so that any council member who wants something on a future meeting agenda can certainly get there if they have the majority of support. And I think that's our job is to talk to one another about what's best for Peachtree City, so no, I don't support revisiting this issue. Ms. Johnson, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, this is, um, I know this is, this is a topic that's been brought up and mentioned several times. Um, when it was passed previously, it was within an amendment that I had suggested where a topic to be put on an agenda. Would be brought up in a prior meeting to give transparency and time to our citizens. I would say there's, I can, I, I definitely understand the issue. With this ordinance and I would say personally, there's things about that ordinance I don't like. I don't think it's a perfect ordinance and I, you know, I think it's important for us as elected officials to, when there's a possible issue, to be willing to go back. And, and see where, you know, we can possibly make things better. There are, I wouldn't say that I would naturally. If the motion is to put it back exactly how it was, I can't say that I will be for that exact ordinance right now. But I do think it is worth a discussion. Um, so if it is for a discussion in October. I would personally be okay with having that discussion. So.
Appreciate your support.
All right. Uh, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, no. Motion carries, thank you. Any other council staff topics?
Clint, do you have any others?
Uh, you want to go ahead?
Okay.
Ms. Johnson.
Do you have any?
I do not. I have a sick daughter at home, so.
We'll be quick.
I understand that. I, uh, okay, so, uh, I'm going to talk about the one that just popped up with Mr. Forrestal speaking, and that is. With regard to the hockey issue. So if I understand this correctly. He, you got your five oh one C three, and I'm not trying to have an interaction, but they got their five oh one C three, sorry. They got their five oh one C three and now they're having trouble scheduling rink time when we told them at a prior meeting. If you get your five oh one C three, we will let you have rink time. Am I understanding that correct? Because now, now, wait, let me just finish one other thing, because now it's being said, oh, you're too much like this other. Organization, you're doing the same thing, which from what I'm hearing, they may not be. And then the other part of it is. Is that different from what we do with every other sport and every other league that we have? Do we have more than two soccer leagues that are getting time or? You know, kids softball or baseball or whatever? I guess that's my, that's the question. I'm, I'm wondering. Have, have we done something astray of what we should be doing here?
Now okay to answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
I will answer the first question, which was when we had this discussion about the, is my microphone on? Everybody hear me okay? Okay. Um, we said they had to get the IRS determination letter in order to be eligible for the city to contract with them for the use. That was the legal requirement in our ordinance now. They now have that from what he indicated at the microphone.
Right.
That was the point I made when it was discussed the last time.
Okay.
As to the other issues, that's more staff than it is me, so I'll let them address the second question.
Harold, you want to go ahead and get up, get up there and I'll kind of talk about some things. I did, did you all see the email I sent to you all last night?
Yeah. No.
Summarize, okay.
No, I didn't.
Summarizing the meeting. So I'll, I'm just going to read it because it's better than me trying to hit the highlights. So I did call a meeting yesterday with Mr. Forrestal and the, uh. Peachtree City Hockey Association to kind of work out what, you know, for me to hear from both sides of what exactly was happening. So the purpose of the meeting was to discuss a request from the newly formed Peachtree City Hockey Club to be recognized by the city. As a second association to gain access to city facilities, specifically the hockey rink for their practices. The city's longstanding practice, though not codified in a written policy, has been to avoid duplicating recreational services by not entering into agreements with multiple associations offering the same sport. The city currently does recognize the Peachtree City Hockey Association as the official partner for both recreational and travel, and travel hockey programs. The association has successfully managed both components for thirty years, or has managed both. Mr. Forrestal, representing the hockey club, cited that soccer and baseball are examples where the city works with multiple groups. We did clarify in soccer, while two associations do exist, they share the same president and operate collaboratively. One overseeing the recreational league, the other handling the travel programs without duplicating their services. In baseball, Little League manages both, and I, I'm very aware of baseball because I, all my boys are in it. Um, in baseball, Little League manages both recreational and travel all-star programs. Other independent travel teams do exist in our community. But they're not under city agreements, nor do they utilize our city fields. A similar request for use of the Peachtree, uh, a similar request to the Peachtree City Hockey Club from a competing baseball league was made to us four years ago and we denied it. Uh, additionally, staff noted prior situations in swimming where internal conflicts led to splits within the association. This happened two years ago and Ted was involved in this one too. Uh, in each case, the, our staff has maintained its position of recognizing only one official association and encouraged the groups to resolve their differences internally. So this happened with swimming two years ago and this is the exact same situation. Staff further understands that recent internal issues within the current hockey association may have contributed to the creation of the new club. While city, while staff respects those concerns, staff's position remains consistent. Staff will not recognize or enter an agreement with a second hockey association that would duplicate services. The position has been reviewed with the city attorney and aligns with prior decisions regarding other sports associations. Uh, staff, staff did, at this meeting yesterday, I did communicate to Mr. Forrestal that he had every right to appeal to you all as city council. Uh, for, for a decision, um, if he did not like our conclusion. So that is what I wrote yesterday to you all.
I have some comments. That's okay?
Oh, go right ahead.
They're not the same. Let me state that again. These are not the same. We have a recreational hockey league. The word recreational tells me that this is basically a teaching league. I was in it myself, not a hockey league, but in recreational type sports my childhood. Recreation leagues are there to have the, the children in the, the community understand the sport, get used to it, get playing in it, have fun in it. Do comradeship, also understand what it's like to be under a coach and take coaches', uh, uh, coaches' direction. But we're not talking about the same thing when you get a recreational, uh, travel team that's cobbled together. Typically with, um, the coaches saying, well, you know, I've got two people on my team, one happens to be my son. We all have dealt with this. Let's put them on the travel team. The difference between that and a true travel team, which is going to compete at a much higher level, much higher level. Against kids who are specifically taken by independent people, not by the coaches. Taken by independent people and they're brought in to a travel hockey team at a high level. We've sent our recreational hockey travel leagues to tournaments. They got beat so bad, they got beat like a drum. I mean, they were sent home, you know, losing, you know, they basically called the games because they can't compete. My question is, these are two different things. We're talking about recreational hockey, which I'm full, full in favor of, but a travel team of the best of the best. Uh, it goes back to that movie, Best of the Best of the Best, sir. That's kind of what you want on the travel team to represent Peachtree City. Against some of the big teams from the north side of Atlanta and around the state. And I believe that a travel team with the best players, regardless of, uh, you know, where they're from, we want them obviously from Peachtree City. But that's got to be put together versus a recreational team, which is also a travel team. Now, I, I, I see that they're very, very different in my mind. I was like that when I was a kid. I always wanted to get on the travel team. I wasn't good enough to get on the travel team, but I loved the games and I loved to play and I got on to the local recreation, travel teams. And unfortunately, we got the crap beat out of us too. So I don't want to see that here in Peachtree City. I want to see the kids go and excel. They maybe have a career in this, this, uh, this particular sport. Why deny them? Why deny them the opportunity to get on the best team that Peachtree City can put together?
Okay, I, I have a couple of comments. So the other group has not had a travel team since twenty twenty, so I don't think we can consider them a travel team, which means if they're trying to establish a travel team. They're not duplicating what the other group is doing. One is recreation, one is travel.
I will, I will say there, Councilwoman Brown. I haven't verified it myself, but meeting, the meeting yesterday with the hockey association, they did say they have had travel teams every year. And that, did they say that?
That's what was reported yesterday at the meeting, yes.
Okay, we have no formal written policy that says you can't have two leagues or groups sharing spaces.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no policy that this says that we can't grant what the new team is trying to get. They got their five oh one C three. They're saying the other, other group doesn't travel, the other group is saying they do travel. I think we've seen a deterioration of them working together. I don't think we need to force groups to work together that can't. I think that that's just not fair to our citizens and it's most definitely not fair to the kids. So I have a real strong feeling and I do not want the recreation department to sit down now and change the written policy to try to stop this from happening. That's my other feeling on this, and I guess I feel pretty strongly about this, but I think we need to allow this group that did what we led them to believe. They needed to do to be able to schedule this independently with a five oh one C three, which we talked about on this dais, that it was probably going to take them six or eight months. And that maybe in the interim, they could work together. They thought they were working together. That's not working, that's broken down now and they've got what we said they needed. I think we need to schedule them and we need to give them an adequate access to the time that they want for these kids. So that they can grow this group into something viable on behalf of the kids. It's part of, either we support this recreation program or what are we doing? So, that's how I feel.
Um, I think we need to forward these conversations. Mr. Forrestal, my upper stance, uh, tomorrow morning I have a meeting at ten, but I can certainly meet either before that or after that and I welcome the opportunity. I need to learn more.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule this team. I don't know whether we have the power to do that, but I mean. Saying that we're just going to continue to kick this can down the road while these kids are not, I mean, time was of the essence when, when Mr. Forrestal came forward before. I think we should have a consensus of the council to make them or allow them, at least at this point in time, this juncture, to go ahead and schedule rink time.
I'll second your emotion, uh, your motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I would appreciate an opportunity to get educated. I have something on the calendar for tomorrow. I don't think that's kicking the can. I think we all need to understand what's the impact on staff. You know, what does it take to have more than one, if that's what this is, organization? I need to get an understanding of this before I can vote on it. Ms. Johnson, do you want to ring?
What can I get, what's the motion currently? To, to go ahead and establish it or to put it on the agenda?
I'm making a motion that we allow this team to go ahead and schedule rink time through the recreation department. That's what's, I mean.
Which team?
Okay, Mr. Forrestal's, what's, I, what's the name of the? The travel team. Let's refer to them as the travel team.
Peachtree City Hockey Club.
The Fayette Hockey Club.
Fayette.
Fayette Hockey Club.
Fayette Hockey, Fayette Hockey Club?
We have, we have a legal interruption here.
A suggestion of sorts.
Okay.
I think the appropriate thing, if council's wanting to move forward, would be to move forward with the facility use agreement, move forward with the formal. Because there are agreements that each of these associations enter into with the city in order to move forward. So rather than say, let's start scheduling them, I think it'd be direct. Staff to move forward with the facility use agreement.
Would that need an amendment? Wouldn't that need an amendment to this motion?
Okay, I withdraw whatever I was making as a motion before.
I need you to withdraw your second, please, sir.
Withdraw.
Okay, I'll withdraw the second.
I make a motion that we do what Ted just said about.
Which would be to move forward with a facility use agreement.
Move forward with a facility use agreement for the new travel team, whatever its official name is. Now second it, Clint.
And I'll second that.
Okay, can I ask a couple of questions? All right. I don't know what's going on with this hockey league. I, I don't have any kids that play hockey, but it seems like there is a rift of some sorts. And just in this meeting, I feel like we're getting some conflicting information. One saying we have travel, one saying there hasn't been travel since twenty twenty. I have the new league saying this is only for ages eight to fourteen, but we're not doing, using middle schoolers or high schoolers. I have an eighth grader who's thirteen, which meaning, yeah, that, that would include middle schoolers, so I don't know, I'm. I don't understand how we're saying this is for eighteen to fourteen, but we're not targeting middle schoolers, because these are. Your age range encompasses all of middle school ages. I, I do understand that time is of the essence. It does seem that whatever services have been provided. By the hockey league that we currently have a contract with, that it has not been sufficient for some of the members. I, I do wish I knew more on this and I would say I do not feel a hundred percent comfortable making this decision at this moment. Because I would like some of that clarity, but one of the things I do hear is that this is just for practice. And that it will not be in conflict with the current association. Are those two things facts?
I vote, Mr. Forrestal, I'm just going to, you can nod her, but I believe yes, it's for practices because your games would be travel. Yeah, so it is just for practices and I believe you just want sun, Sundays or sec?
What we agreed on was Thursday.
Go up, go up to the mic.
Step to the mic, gentlemen.
Is that okay, ma'am?
Three minutes is not enough time. I, I, I would have covered all of this and I think there wouldn't be a lot of these questions right now had I had more time. But we agree, when we met with the Peachtree City Hockey Association on the twenty-second of August. We agreed that, that we would use the rink Thursday nights from six thirty to eight. And on Sunday afternoons from twelve to two. We really wanted to have everything together, but they have got plans for. Uh, now have plans for, um, things after two o'clock on Sunday. So we said, okay, we'll, we'll go with, uh, an hour and a half Thursday night and two hours on Sunday. And that's where it stood on the twenty-second. Okay. Now, if I could, we have got thirty kids signed up, registered. To play on our, um, age group teams, eight, ten, twelve, and fourteen. Thirty kids. Twenty-five, twenty-five families. They're all in on this thing and they know that. Our organization is going to be what they really want, which is a higher level travel team. We support the, the rec league. We need the rec league because it's a feeder to us. We want them to be successful. My son, my grandson is going to play rec hockey and he's going to play on the travel team. And also, our travel team guys are going to play on the rec league's middle and high school teams. So they're, you know, they're, they're mutually supporting, or they should be mutually supporting, and that's what we want to provide as a service. Which is different than, um, the services that have been provided, uh, by the rec, by the Peachtree City Hockey Association Rec League.
We'll add to, we do have the president of the.
I will add to, we do have the president of the Hockey Association here as well, if y'all wanted to ask him any questions.
I don't think, I don't think that's even, not to say I don't want to hear what she's got to say, but what I would say is, it sounds to me, from what Mr. Forstall just said, they're looking for three and a half hours of time to be dedicated to their group. How is it we're having a problem allowing them to have three and a half hours of rink time?
Does this parallel what we've seen before with swimming? Does this parallel what we've seen before with baseball?
Essentially, ma'am, what we have an issue with currently is when they first spoke about sharing hockey rink time and using the time together, um, I immediately called our president, Mr. Yari, and said, hey, is this, are they falling under your umbrella of the Peachtree City Hockey Association, to which we have an association agreement with? I was informed the answer was no, and because of that, because of our association agreement, Mr. Yari is not allowed to sublet our hockey rink for other people to use from him as a rental. So that's why it became, well, either they've got to become an association, or they have to fall under the Peachtree City Hockey Association umbrella, and that makes, fixes everything. So I guess ultimately, decision's yours of, do you want to allow them to become an association? Or are they going to fall under the umbrella of the Hockey Association? Because then, then, you know, they would have to fall under Peachtree City Hockey Association's insurance liability waivers and all that stuff as well. So that's really the big whole.
What I've heard is that, uh, the good counselor here has said that, um, if we wanted to, we could move forward with, what did you call it?
Give them a use agreement.
Basically, the use agreement.
The use agreement.
Facility, facility use.
Isn't that what it's called?
And that would then just, then become a matter of the hockey associations, both would have to deal with recreation and divide up the time. It's really what I'm hearing. Is that correct? Did I, did I state that correctly?
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay.
And I'll answer, to answer your question a little more common sense wise, Ms. Brown, for me, as staff, it came down to the, the decision we made as a staff was just because it was consistent with other decisions we've made with other associations. Um, as far as when they've had conflict and split off, or even if they haven't had conflict, if we've had other groups want to come in and have time in our facilities consistently, like run a league or run practices, we, we have always said no, besides just having our regular associations. So I, I was just going, even though there is no written policy, that is correct, and I stated that in my email, that is just the precedent, and after talking with Ted, that was, since that's the precedent we had set, we followed that to its logical conclusion, which is, it is bureaucratic, but that is, that is how we came to our conclusion.
Suzanne, you going to make a motion on that?
Okay. Well, there's a motion on the floor. We're just having a discussion still.
There is a motion.
Pardon me for a moment. I don't believe it needs a motion. If they're going to sign a facility.
Actually, that was one clarification I was going to make.
I mean, they do have certain requirements they have to meet, so I anticipate this actual agreement being on the next agenda. I mean, that's why I said moving forward as opposed to approving that agenda item, because we haven't announced this as an agenda item. It's been brought up as a council staff topic. But that also gives the association, what is it, two weeks? There'll be insurance requirements, and a few other boxes to check, like we do for all of our associations. But short of that, that's the way I phrased it, the way I did, so that we could come forward. Because the only other question I did have is we also have an adult league, so don't we have an adult hockey league as well? Okay. So I know at some point, there's got to be some consideration given in terms of scheduling. Like, I know that they've worked out time periods. I'm assuming that you've taken into account what the adult schedule is and figuring that out. That's what I figured.
Travel teams, travel teams play here sometimes, correct?
Uh, right now, at this moment, all we have, I believe, is we just got our recreation leagues that play up there. Because ultimately, the issue that we're dealing with is we have one hockey rink with, for all these kids. It's not like we have soccer, where we've got 15 soccer fields available, or baseball, where we have 13 baseball fields available in Peachtree City. There's one hockey rink, so that's also a constraint. Same way in the past with the swimming teams. There was one pool that they could do competitive swimming with eight lanes in it. You know, in order for us to have windows where citizens that wanted to get in there and swim, we have to restrict the amount of people that can be in the pool at the same time. Otherwise, we would constantly have issues with patrons, patrons who, you know, pay their taxes that want to swim on a regular basis. You know, how do, how do we work those in as well? So ultimately, scheduling is, is key here, so.
So that's what was behind the staff recommendation against having yet another association?
As long as we can work it out and everything can be worked out schedule-wise, I mean, that's ultimately, you know, council's decision.
So, Ted, did I hear basically the motion should be at this point to put this on the agenda for next time?
No, 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 no.
After the work is done?
No, I think the proper motion's been made.
Right.
To move forward with it.
They'll move forward, and if they qualify with everything that needs to be formally approved by us, then it would show up on the next agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I don't see any reason why we should not let them move forward. I also, lacking a formal written policy, I mean, I don't think we should be forcing these groups to get together and work together. It may sound like a wonderful idea, but not everybody can work together when their mission is different. And I think forcing groups to work together, uh, not the best plan for our citizens, and I want to take care of these kids. So I'm totally on board with this, and I hope you'll at least agree that they should move forward and, you know.
Yeah, so I don't know if our facility use agreement is just the same for everybody, but we have an association that says, all we want is to practice. So I would like to take them at their word and allow them to practice. So I would want that facility agreement to have that in it, because if they get a facility agreement and it allows them now to host games and do things that we aren't talking about in this moment, but they have this piece of paper later on that says, well, we get to do this because we gave you this facility use agreement, and now it's no holds bar, you get to do everything you want. That's not the case. So I would like to allow them to do what they are asking to do, which is to have practice time. And if it goes to something more than that in the future, they can come back and we can work it out. But I would be fine with a facility use agreement for giving them practice time on Thursdays and Sundays, as long as it doesn't assoc, impede our current association. And I, and I would feel comfortable with that. And so I would be fine putting it on the next agenda. I feel like that gives me enough time to, any other questions that I may have to figure it out.
And I don't want to see anything, I, I don't want to see anything added to the facility use agreement that's not in every other facility use agreement that we have. That's, that's, you know, I hear you saying, oh, I want them to be told they can't have tournaments here somewhere down the road if they expand. I don't think that's fair either.
Well, we'll be, we'll be taking a look at exactly what it is that they want. I'm, I'm for that. I'm for moving it forward. It does not pass it. It's for moving it forward to a future.
And in the interim, can they schedule their time?
No, no.
Why, why would you be against? We're scheduling a time when they had an agreement already.
We have an association, they have insurance, they have checked all the boxes that Peachtree City requires of all of our associations. Am I correct?
I'm not getting into that. I'm getting into the fact that until we have a use agreement in place, that's the starting point. I mean, can there be conversations between the, and then to where if it gets approved, they can launch immediately? Absolutely.
So use agreement got, has got to come first, before you can start any of these discussions on, uh, who gets what time and who gets to play, whatever. You got to have one of them in a, in place. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes. We've got to have that in place.
Is that what you need, is a motion?
We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Any other council staff topics?
Yes, oddly, um, I, I, I'd like to make a motion, I, I mean, I talked about it at the last meeting, it came up in council, or in public comment. Um, I think we also need to move forward with banning, um, feeding the deer. Now, uh-huh, enforcement is going to be a problem, but I think that we need to move in that direction. Other areas and cities do it. So I make a motion that we move forward with establishing whatever amendment to the ordinances that we need to do to ban feeding the deer.
Can I get, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Can I get a comment from staff on that, please?
Sure. I don't know about that. I don't want to just work it. Um, I'll hold that.
Here you go, mobile mic.
Many communities do have ordinances that ban feeding, uh, so there's no problem with that. I mean, you can certainly do it. The enforcement is where it becomes an issue. Um, and so people are doing this in their backyards, they're putting out corn, scraps, whatever. So yes, we could certainly have an ordinance that says that. We could respond to, uh, to complaints from neighbors if that is occurring, but it's going to be an enforcement issue. But these ordinances do exist all across the, uh, the country and in Georgia.
So what, what do you, I'm in support. So what do you want to see? You want to see a sample ordinance, or do you want, I mean, are we?
I, I think at this point, a, a sample of what other communities have put in place, and I don't know whether we can, I mean, obviously, if you're in violation of an ordinance, maybe you have a healthy discussion at the point in time when you bring something forward, here's what these other cities have, and then we look at, and how are we going to enforce that? And is there a penalty? Or do we have to put verbiage in the ordinance that says what would happen, or, you know, I mean, obviously, if you're violating our ordinances in one shape, form, or another, we already have, like, if you're parking on the grass in your front yard, we have a way to handle that. If you're feeding deer, do we already have a way to handle the enforcement end of it? But we need to have an, an ordinance that says we, we ban that.
Make it a violation.
Correct.
Right, and then the default penalty under the city's charter would be the default.
Then we need to make...
Maximum, the maximum amount they could be fined or sentenced, or whatever.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, if we're going to do the ordinance, it has to have enough teeth in it to have, to get people to focus on the fact that you need to stop.
Well, then we could set a minimum fine in the ordinance itself.
And, and I would, I would expand the ordinance beyond just deer. I would make it all wildlife.
All wildlife, yes, absolutely.
Wildlife, like, as in to include foxes?
Rattles and foxes.
Coyotes, whatever.
Coyotes, yeah.
Good. Okay, so the fact that if the beavers eat your trees, that's not really feeding them? Okay.
All right, I, I do have a motion and a second. Is that for?
May I ask what the motion was?
Yeah.
The motion is that we establish an ordinance, amend, or adopt, uh, change the ordinance to incorporate that feeding the wildlife is banned.
Is prohibited.
Prohibited. Yeah.
And I had a sec, do I have a second on that?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This is to put on a future?
Yeah, well, when they could get it prepared.
At some point.
So, so wouldn't the motion be to, to advise staff to work on that?
Stacy, we understand what the motion is. We're good.
We're good. She's got to do the minutes.
The motion was to move forward with an ordinance, is, in so many words.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any other council staff topics?
The other thing that, and, and I realize I could wait until a future meeting, but I really want people to start thinking about this, council members to think about this. I tossed it out the last time, that we have a lot of people who have city property that abut, excuse me, private property that abuts city property, where it's a green belt. And in the event that there's no, um, cart path, or trail, or hiking, or whatever roadway through there, I think we may need to look at, and I seriously wanted to have this discussion, to figure out a way for them to apply to hunt small areas into the city property adjacent to their property. And it's, it's going to be tricky, because I think it's going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, which, I'd like to have this discussion. And I know Chris is the quintessential expert on this at this point in time, and, I mean, I'll gladly come and sit down with you, Chris, at some point, and we'll look at, because I've looked at several of the green belts that we have that seem to be large enough to allow people to hunt not just their property, but into the green belt.
I'm not in opposition to that. Would it make sense, we heard the phrase earlier today, let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good? Would it make sense, let's get an implementation going? We have a brand-new pilot program underway. I think it's going to be very reasonable. Staff has put a lot of time into it. What would you think of letting them carry forward this season, and then we can take a look at that afterwards? I, I think that's a very reasonable, uh, next step.
And the only reason why I would disagree with waiting and putting it forth for next year is the deer population in Flat Creek that's going to be reduced by our pilot program is not where we have the worst problem with, you know, cars hitting deer on Robinson, et cetera. And yet we have several areas where, like I said, I, I mean, I can pick out quite a few properties that have adequate green belt behind them, that to allow them to just to go into, with written permission from the city. Obviously, we have to give them permission to hunt on our property. So it would have to be a case-by-case basis and make sure there's no, I think we should, I should, think we should look at it. Hunting season lasts until January 31st, and we've not given certain neighborhoods a, a legitimate option with our pilot program to reduce the deer population in some of those neighborhoods. I think that by looking at this, it, it, maybe if we do it in October, we'd still have citizens who could hunt their property through the end of January, and actually reduce the deer population where it's needed most.
Again, I don't disagree. I, I think that we always, we're always cognizant of staff time. The word case-by-case basis is kind of a, an alert to me on staff time. We've got a good program, I, I would suggest, let's, let's get an improvement.
Poor Chris is looking like, yeah. Let me ask you, let me ask you, before, okay, so let me ask you one other question. Today is the last day for people to apply for the permits for the, for the pilot program.
For the first weekend.
Okay.
Not, not for the whole program, just the first weekend.
And that will be when? And that will be when?
Today is the last day to apply for the first weekend.
And the first weekend will be when?
Next weekend.
Not, not this coming up, following, 12th, 13th, 14th.
Okay, let me ask you, how many people have applied?
I think we're around 100 right now.
That's more than enough for us to get a good sampling of what happens.
That would fill the entire season, but the way we did the lottery is we're giving preference to Peachtree City residents.
Right.
So they get, they'll get drawn first, and we'll fill all available slots with them, and then what's left over would, you know, be the backfield. But we're also going to, anybody that's applied up to this point, they'll just be rolled into the, to the larger lottery, which will cover the other 11 weeks. And then, and then we'll take more applications as well, but, but we've already got enough, like you said, to fill every slot.
You know, I mean, I'm sitting here with my mouth hanging open. I'm thrilled that we have that much interest in hunting. I don't know that we have, if we have, how many, how many hunters will we have total getting authorized?
96.
96. I hope to God we have more than 96 deer in that area, so that every one of them can get one at least. And obviously, they can take more than one, so that earlier in the season that they do it, uh, we really need to expand what city property we consider for hunting. There's obviously more than enough desire from the hunters to help us with the deer population, so.
Anything more on deer? Anything more on anything else?
No, ma'am.
Did we, did we vote on the motion to push this or whatever?
Did you have a motion on that?
Did I?
Was there a motion on that?
I don't think so.
Was there?
No, no. Okay. I don't recall. I took the, I took the instruction, so I know what I need to do over the next couple weeks.
We'll take a look at it. I don't mind taking a look, but honestly, we've got a pilot program just about to kick off. It's a good program, let's move forward, and I think we should have this conversation[1731.32] And I think we should have this conversation when the time is right.
I think the time is right.
All right. All right, so staff will move forward on that. Uh, any other council staff topics?
No, I think I've exhausted my stuff here.
Nobody else?
I don't have anything today. No.
All right, uh, just real briefly, Peachtree City, as your mayor, I have the authority and the responsibility to share factual information with our citizens. It's late. Everybody's ready to go to lunch. I'm gonna clear up a couple of very common misunderstandings. I am completely gobsmacked by a repeated reference to, first of all, Justin, a $10 million maintenance backlog. I can't find it. I don't see it in our budget. My understanding was that, very briefly, in 2023, Bob Kurnow came in new as a city manager. There was an incredibly sizable maintenance backlog from the previous administration. I think we hired two new maintenance technicians, and that we have eliminated the backlog. Please tell me if I'm remembering that correctly.
Yeah, I would say, so one thing we did too, when Bob came in, we originally had AR, ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds, allocated to possibly construct Station 86, which would be the fire station on Macduff, um, which has been planned, or proposed to be planned for a while. What we decided to do when Bob came in was reallocate that, not build that fire station, and allocate it into some, uh, city renovation projects and maintenance things. So that includes what we're about to do at City Hall. It includes, uh, it included a new roof at Kedron. It included work at the tennis center. It included the athletic field lightings for girls softball and, and baseball and, and lacrosse. It included fixes to the boardwalk at, um, at Flat Creek, and there might be a few others in there that I'm just forgetting off the top of my head. But then, yes, other than that, in the 2023 budget, we put two new maintenance technicians in there for buildings, because we only had three, uh, for our 80 buildings, uh, throughout the city, so we have five now. Talking with our facilities manager, and I, I really didn't even talk to, to him, but David McDaniel, you all have met him. He's fantastic. He's been here over 20-something years. He's very happy with the state of where we are with our ongoing maintenance. I'm happy with it. As far as any maintenance projects we have, a lot of them are just the bigger things that we, we are currently discussing, as far as Kedron, like the pools, like, uh, the cover over Kedron, some big things like that. But as far as ongoing maintenance that is dilapidated, or things aren't being taken care of, that is not, I'm very happy with where we are. Our staff is very happy with where we are in the cycle that we're in, because we did bolster, besides hiring two maintenance technicians, we actually increased, probably doubled, the amount that we spend on just building maintenance every year, as far as getting things done. Like, when things pop up, taking care of them immediately. Um, so as far as where we are, I'm very happy with it, with our maintenance cycle.
Okay, thank you. Um, another, another issue that seems to have come up is two-by-two meetings. Just to clarify, in our last city council meeting on August 21st, it became clear that two of our city council members had been meeting together or meeting together behind closed doors with the city manager. I just want to make clear, that is not against the law. Mr. Meeker, can I get a clarification on that? Two-by-two meetings are not in any way.
As long as it's not a quorum, it's not a violation of the Georgia open meeting law.
So even when we have only four up here, for two people to go behind closed doors, is that against the law?
No, because the quorum under the charter.
What about if the mayor and one council member?
And let me add this, in addition to the quorum issue, you also have a city ordinance that states that not more than two can meet at any one time.
Not more than two.
So it's both Georgia law and city self-imposed restriction.
So I, I just want to make it clear that two council members going behind closed doors to discuss budget is not any kind of violation of the law. I guess, I guess I'll stop there. Um, yeah, it's, it's late and everybody wants to get to lunch. Um, I don't have any other council staff topics.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for.
Mr. Holland?
Yep.
Let me, you said your daughter is sick.
It's okay.
Are you sure? I'll be brief. I just have one quick claim.
I can, no, no, no. If she would be texting me, and if I needed to leave, I would leave.
Okay.
I have someone taking care of her for the moment, so it's okay.
I just want to make sure that, because this won't be long. I can assure you that.
I appreciate it. It's fine. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, I make a motion that we go into executive session for pending and/or potential litigation.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.